I'm going to reconvene with our August 4th work session, open work session. The first item on the agenda will be the discussion and publication of municipal charters. This is Howarth. I know this is something that the law department wanted to discuss with the council, so I'll let you start.
Yeah, we had come to you before and your question was to see whether any of the municipalities were publishing it on their own. You'll see the memo there. Salisbury is and Fruland is publishing it on their own. The smaller municipalities do not publish it on their own. It is published through MML, but the gentleman at MML said it takes about a year and a half for that to process through. It has proven to be costly for us to be constantly publishing. If you'll see the last go around, we'll get a bill and most of it was Salisbury amendments and they already publish it on their own. So that was information that county council requested. So it's one to decide if you would want to make any changes. It is in the county code and it also happens to be in the charter that we would do that. So there'd be a legislative bill to change the code and then obviously the process to change the charter if the council was interested in changing our responsibility for publishing those charters.
Any council questions?
What type of expense are we talking about?
The bills get sent to you all, so I think Mr. Kramer would probably have to pull the history on what's been charged.
The highest bill I can remember was thirteen thousand dollars.
Sure.
It's fairly substantial.
Okay.
What type of feedback have we had from?
We didn't talk to the municipalities about it. We came to you first to see if there was something you were even interested in before we would ever speak to them about it. You know, Fruland and Salisbury may not truly care because they do it on their own anyways. The smaller towns may be concerned if we did not do that, but I have not asked them and I don't believe the county attorney did either.
Any opinions?
I mean, so when you say they're published, MML publishes, you know, like Maradella Springs, for instance, if we didn't, would Maradella Springs have to pick up that expense then or would the MML publishing be okay for them?
MML is free, so that would be Maradella's choice. If they wanted to start publishing in any way, shape, or form, they certainly could. I don't know what their charter says about them publishing. I only know what ours says.
All right.
If they chose to, they certainly would have an expense.
All right. Yeah, I'm just wondering. I don't want to push, you know, like Maradella Springs' budget isn't substantial at all. I don't want to push thirteen thousand dollars down onto them.
Well, thirteen thousand was our total cost.
Okay, well, I wouldn't want to push a thousand dollars onto them. You know, I mean, that's substantial for them.
And I think if you probably look back at your bills, the small towns are not the one that are driving the costs, but that would have to be confirmed by looking at each bill.
It seems somewhat redundant for us to do it as well if MML is doing this. It seems somewhat redundant for the county to be doing that as well.
I think the concern would be there, the lag in MML actually posting the changes. I think it's definitely redundant for Salisbury and Fruland who are already doing it on their own.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Pursue it further.
Any?
And the small municipalities have, probably have very infrequent changes in their codes.
Sure.
In their codes.
So I guess the consensus from the council would be to move forward?
Do you want to move forward on all of them or just the two larger entities?
Can we be selective?
We're making amendment to the code and the charter, so.
I would say all of them, but first by making contact with everyone who would be impacted by that too, just to make sure they're okay. I doubt there's going to be much pushback from it anyway. I really don't think there is.
We can make the contacts.
Great. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. The second item on the open work session is a discussion on the Booth Street property and cooperation agreement with that. I know that Mr. Maloney is here and I assume representatives from Penrose are here. Gentlemen, if you'd like to join us, feel free. Would you all like any water?
I brought mine.
Would you all like some water?
Thank you very much.
I'll see that.
Oops, sorry.
Mr. Maloney, I'd like a check on that water there.
Actually, I came from a cup and Mr. Davis offered him a drink.
And now you're in worse trouble.
Well, we didn't swear, man.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Good evening. Thank you for having us up here tonight. I'm Tom Maloney and I am representing the Housing Authority in conjunction with a request before you to entertain a pilot agreement with Penrose Development. So, Mr. Cannon, I don't know how you would wish to proceed if you would like us to...
What I would just, just first of all, I'd like everyone to introduce themselves. Unfortunately, our microphone system needs to be changed. You have to use a mic, but we've never seemed to have enough.
Okay.
Just let us know who you are and who you're paying.
I'm Don Beaubout, the Executive Director of the Housing Authority.
Patrick Stewart, I'm with Penrose Properties. We'll be developing, lead developer on the project and also managing the community when it's done.
Okay, great.
Thank you. Just some brief comments and maybe if you know me, I guess as I get older, I just like to say what I think and speak my mind and probably aren't politically correct, but that's okay. I guess you can do that after you're 50. So, we sent to you and want to thank Maureen for all of her assistance in trying to get all this together. We sent you a memo identifying three areas that I thought you would have some interest and/or some concerns about. So the purpose of the memo was to give you an update on what's going on on both the original pilot that's with the county. I know that there have been issues over the years with the housing stock of the Housing Authority with respect to their ninety scattered sites. And then the third item, which is near and dear to our hearts tonight, is this proposed pilot with Penrose Development. So, I want to speak first, if I could, to the Penrose issue and then sort of backtrack with the Housing Authority. As most of you know, the Housing Authority has had for many, many years properties over on Booth Street. There are 100 units there and they are circa 1969.
Sixty-nine.
So they've had a long life and to say that they're beaten, battered, and tired is probably an understatement, but there's 100 units there that quite frankly need to go and something needs to take their place. The cost of trying to rehab them would be not worth the money with environmental issues, asbestos, and some other things. So for the last several years, the Housing Authority has been dealing with developers to try to renovate and rebuild this project and they have settled on and have been working diligently with Penrose Development to try to bring something new and improved to Booth Street. So here's a little background. The 100 units on Booth Street have never been subject to a pilot. They have been exempt and so you've received no tax revenue from them since 1969. They are not part of, other than being managed by the Housing Authority, the ninety scattered sites. So the Booth Street 100-unit residential project and the scattered sites are two separate things and those 100 units are exempt and have been since they were built. The Housing Authority does not have the resources, nor could they get the resources, for them to either renovate or build, knock them down and build a new project. So they are working with Penrose to achieve that. So with a little background, and I hate to be laborious, but I just think you sort of need to know what the process is and why we're here. The way these projects get built in this Phase One, this proposed Phase One eighty-four units, is essentially built with federal tax credits. And the federal tax credit program means that big-scale investors, the Bank of America's, Wells Fargo's, buy these tax credits, use those for a period of fifteen years in exchange for which they put money into this project. And we're talking, in this particular one, probably thirteen or fourteen million.
Exactly, yep.
Okay. So thirteen or fourteen million for Phase One comes from institutional investors in exchange for federal tax credits. And low-income housing throughout the United States is oftentimes built using this very model, which is provided by the federal government. So along with federal tax credits comes some other things that the folks at Bank of America, Wells Fargo, need to make sure of, and that is, number one, that the projects are always in compliance with federal law, with HUD regulations, with requirements for income levels, with requirements about who the tenants can be or are. So there is substantial oversight in these tax credit projects and the institutional investors send their own auditors in, sometimes annually, sometimes biannually, to make sure that whoever's running these projects is doing it to the letter of the law and that the progress are kept up, the rents are being paid, and other requirements are met. So the institutional investors keep a major hand in making sure these projects stay compliant. And what happens is that those federal tax credits extend for a period of fifteen years. So, and I apologize, I didn't think about this earlier, but I should have done something for you that would help you understand how this works. And the way it works is, is that while the big investor owns these tax credits, they own 99.9% of the project.
With the thirteen million?
For the thirteen million institutional investor generally owns 99.9% of the project for the life of their tax credits. So they have all the guns. And the 1% during that first fifteen years is divided amongst...
One tenth of a percent.
One tenth of a percent, excuse me, one tenth of a percent is divided amongst Penrose at 80% and the Housing Authority at 20%. So for the first fifteen years, they own a very, very, very minute part of the project because the institutional investors will protect those tax credits because if they don't and the tax credits are deemed not in compliance, then they come after people to pay that large amount of money that they're going to get hit with federal taxes. So...
Am I getting ahead of us when I say it's a thirty-five million dollar project, right?
Total. It's thirty-four to thirty-five million.
Phase One is about seventeen million dollar total project cost.
Are you saying the thirteen million is what, just Phase One?
Just Phase One.
Okay.
So thirteen million for Phase One and then when they get around to Phase Two, same sort of funding mechanism, hopefully if that same funding mechanism is still around at the federal level, but they've been around for a while. So, so that you understand about who's running the show, the big multimillion dollar investor runs the show and things stay very tight and in compliance during that tax credit period, which is fifteen years. So in this particular case, like most others done like this, 99.9% is the big investor and then that smaller percentage is split between Penrose Development, who is developing the project with the Housing Authority. Once the project is built, Penrose manages the project. So Penrose Management Company steps in, it runs the project, it does the leases, it sends all of its compliance information to the big investor, and any pilot payments comes directly from the checkbook of Penrose. So I want to be clear, A, about how the project is built and B, about how it gets handled and managed through the first fifteen years.
So what's the status of the Housing Authority for those fifteen years? What do they play into this, Housing Authority?
They are there. They're going to be placing people that have vouchers, I think?
The RAD process, which is funding mechanism.
Sorry.
It's a rental demonstration program that HUD implemented about three years ago to convert public housing stock into moderate to low-income, mixed-income communities. Through this process, the current residents that are occupying the units of the Housing Authority at time of approval have the right to come back to the new community. In this case, we have 50 units in the mix of the two phases.
And to interrupt you now, not to confuse, you are referencing the single-family homes now?
No, the single-family homes are the scattered sites. We're talking about Booth Street only.
Okay, so Booth Street is currently, has current occupants?
That is correct.
What's the occupancy rate in Booth Street?
Fifty percent.
Fifty percent, okay.
Fifty percent.
All right, sorry.
That's right. So once the Phase One is built, the residents that were temporarily relocated to Phase Two units will have the right to move back into Phase One. They will receive a voucher from the federal government, which will pay a portion of the contract rent between they and the Penrose Development Company, who's the managing company. When that process is complete, they no longer become, they no longer are residents. They're actually residents to that community, which would be Booth Street LLC Phase One. They have the right, after a two-year period, if they want to take that voucher, they can move someplace else, but the first two years, the voucher is committed to their occupancy for that particular project.
Do you screen, you screen the individuals who will be living there, who are moving?
Under the RAD program, you cannot rescreen the residents who are entitled to go back into the new community.
But new ones you would.
But new ones would be done by Penrose.
I'd say the new ones would be done by Penrose. So you were just responsible for the individuals who are in the current 50 units?
That is correct.
So when this is all done and everything's built out, are we saying that the Housing Authority's not going to have anything to do with the Booth Street project?
Not to do with the management.
Management.
No.
Other than their ownership. Other than their small ownership.
For fifteen years?
Yes.
And after that?
After that, I'm sorry. After that, typically what happens, we need to see the county executives if we can order some more microphones.
Paying my taxes.
I knew that was coming.
There's some budget.
I knew that was coming. So what happens is after fifteen years, if the tax credit investor partner wants out, they usually offer the project to the then-current owner, which in this case would be, or they could offer to a third party, but you have to meet all kinds of requirements in order to actually purchase it because it still comes with lots of federal requirements and it still comes with some debt. So you have to be qualified to do that.
Would that be Penrose?
Pardon?
Would that be Penrose?
That would be Penrose and the Housing Authority because they own 80%, they own 20%, other 1%.
Other tenth of a percent.
Yes, but that, when they get rid of the 99.9, that ripens generally into a division
of the current owner development, which is that one tenth of a percent.
The Housing Authority would be interested in that 20%? I mean, they don't want to just...
Well, no, typically, the original parties to it stay in the deal for a long, long time because the requirements, the covenants that affect this property run for 40 years. So for 40 years, this property must be dedicated to the use of low-income, modern-income housing.
So in fifteen years, the Housing Authority's going to be looking for money to buy this, buy their part?
Well, perhaps, or the larger portion of it, which would be the Penrose portion because of the 80% partner, are usually the ones that have, no offense to anyone here, have the deep pockets that can make that happen.
We could also theoretically choose to reinvest after 15 years and seek another round of tax credits to, you know, further improvements to the property and kind of re-up, as it were.
And that's a good question, Mr. Holloway. And what typically happens is if the project, quite frankly, is done nicely, and it will be, and it's maintained well, to go after additional tax credits to revitalize it, may not be necessary in year 15. It may be year 20, year 22. Just depends on the condition, the physical condition of the project. So typically what happens is, and I've been involved with another entity recently that does many of these, they have actually purchased out, they've been in business 21 years and they just a year purchased five projects coming off that 15-year cycle, and they said three of the five projects do not need to be revitalized yet to do. So it just depends at the end of the 15 years where they're at. So I wanted to get some clarification about who the players were, how this process is moving forward, to give you some comfort level on what's there. And in our humble opinion, something needs to happen in that area to revitalize it. I mean, there's a lot of blight there. I think it's a wonderful opportunity. The county is interested in having folks with low to moderate income have housing, and in this particular case, it would be very nice.
TJ, that brings up a question. How do you determine that the county needs low-cost housing?
Do you want me to address that or you want to address that? You can or I can. I mean, we've done a detailed market study prior to applying for funds. The investor also...
Can we have a copy of that study?
I don't know if you do. We could definitely provide one.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see it.
Yes, and I'm happy to get you that data. I will tell you, my last look at it from another project that I am working on indicated that in addition to what's currently here, there was a need for approximately 200 more low-to-modern-income housing units in Wyomaca County. And I think that comes as a product of the census data from the last census, plus some other factors that both HUD and the state of Maryland do to determine that county by county. So we could provide you some data for that.
Now, you say that you're working on a project and that data came forth in that...
Yes, sir.
Okay, and that's based on the projects that have just been completed in Salisbury also?
Yes, actually. There's some recent projects that were done here. Absolutely correct.
Great, thanks.
Kind of a clarification on our role because I have questions, I mean, I have a lot of questions over the projects as a whole.
Sure.
Costs really seem to be absolutely astronomical. It's sort of not within the county's realm to debate that one way or the other. The cost per unit, based on your figures as I got it, was about $208,000 per unit with a 35 million price tag on 168 units. I thought that was expensive. There was an estimate that it would be $20,000 to refurbish the individual homes themselves. And I believe someone had had a discussion with the individual, the contractor, who was doing the refurbishing of the current homes and their price tag was more in the line of probably 30,000 to 40,000, what it was costing them to renovate these homes. You know, you're stating that it's 20,000. So these are just some concerns, as I said, probably not within our realm, but I think should be expressed.
Well, and I appreciate your comment. I would make, I would make the following comment about that. The cost per unit, there's a formula that all of these big-scale projects use, both from the federal and state level. These are funded, quite frankly, differently. And so they have some different cost calculations in them. I think, Mr. Cannon, I don't want to mix up the Booth Street cost projects versus the scattered site renovation costs because I think they're two different things. I will tell you that some of the things that must happen at Booth Street is, is that some of those units have asbestos, they have lead, and some of the remediation is quite expensive with respect to that. And I will be also very honest, you know, in the business, I own real estate, both commercial and rental. We renovate our properties. I do them, you know, as economically feasible as possible. So I know how I would do mine, but when you're dealing with large-scale projects, I think there's a cost, there's cost factors that we don't necessarily have in our single-unit sites. So I would say, you know, 17 is probably not unreasonable, given we're talking 84 units. And part of that has to factor into the cost and price of land because these projects have to incorporate that. So, but I don't have my spreadsheets with respect to cost, but I understand your position. And the reason why the pilot was sent forth as it is, is that we were asking for the county's help because in going forward, we have 100 existing units that are exempt. We are proposing in Phase One, 84 units, and in Phase Two, 84 units. Of the 84 units in the Phase One, we are requesting that 50 of those remain exempt, just like they have been exempt since 1969, I suppose. And we are asking for a pilot to be imposed on the other 34 that are in Phase One, so that we are basically retaining 50 exempt units in Phase One and 34 units subject to a pilot to meet the requirements for this low-income housing.
And primarily, I guess, that's the focus of why you gentlemen are here tonight.
Yes.
Because the issue for the county to consider is the pilot program.
Sure.
Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay. The question I would have is if the county chose not to go ahead with the pilot program, where does that leave us? Where does that leave the project?
I can't answer that directly, but I think it leaves the project dead in the water. So that we have 50 or 100 units that are in pretty rough shape that stay on Booth Street. So these will not work with the financing done through the federal tax credits. To have a developer come in here who would simply be a private developer and have to charge full-scale rent for all of the project if you're going to pay full-scale real estate taxes, et cetera. So on private apartment units, they pay taxes as assessed, but they get full-scale rent. And I think this leaves the project in jeopardy if there is no pilot for the project.
Would you concur with that?
I would concur with that, yep. There are, you know, there are a number of lenders involved in the project. This is, this is kind of a core piece of the operating budget and I think, you know, I guess I'd like to say that it's in not only our interest, but the interest of the community of the county to make sure that there's, you know, something in place to make sure, to help make sure that we can operate the community in a financially sustainable way that's part of what this is about. So hopefully that sort of helps answer the question.
I guess my question would be, and I don't know if you gentlemen could answer it, or maybe Councilman Davis, since I believe this is in your district, what does the wider, you know, the community outside this, you know, where this would be located at, what do some of the neighbors think about this project? Do they know about it? Is this something that, I mean, is there, you know, is this kind of being sprung on, you know, I mean, did you have any idea about, you know?
I think this has been going on for a while. Some people are familiar with it, but they haven't got all the details of it. And my question is, where are you going to put those 50 people while this project is taking place?
They're relocating into Phase Two. We have, I believe, 17 families left in the Phase One building group that's supposed to be relocated. We're waiting for the relocation approval from HUD before we can give them their notice. And they'll be relocated into Phase Two. When Phase One is done, they'll have the opportunity to move back into Phase One. And then we'll have emptied the 50 units for Phase Two.
So while Phase One is going on, they don't have to move out of the projects?
They don't have to move out of the community. They will be relocated through the project budget with no out-of-pocket expense to themselves to a temporary unit, which they will stay in until such time Phase One is complete.
And where's the temporary unit located?
In Booth Street.
On the east path of the site.
So we have 100 units. We will have 50 vacant because they're getting knocked down and 50 occupied by the current residents.
That's where I was getting at. So they don't have to move off-site.
That's what I thought. That's what I thought you meant.
They'll still be in the same community.
Same community, right.
I wasn't aware that the ones that were not occupied were fit for human...
We've been making renovations to them as we have found the need for the number of units that we're going to need for this relocation process, and those units are going to be available for the residents.
Okay. Part of the discussions we've had over the last few weeks and the last few days, I appreciate, TJ, I appreciate your cooperation with our law department. Ms. Howarth, I know there were some concerns that the county does have, and I think there were three specific issues. If you could help us clarify those.
Before we move to those, can I ask a question about the proposed pilot that you sent in?
Certainly.
Sure.
You were talking about the timeline and it says the 25 years begins when Booth Street Phase One LLC acquires a long-term lease title to the property. When in your timeline does that happen?
That should be...
Is that the moment it's done?
When we close, close financing.
When the development's done, okay.
No, no, when we, when we achieve finance closing, prior, immediately prior to construction start, which should be hopefully next month.
Could you use the mic? That way we know.
Oh, I'm sorry. So we would sign a long-term ground lease when we close financing and that's hopefully next month.
And to put it another way, we call that settlement. So when you go to a settlement, that's when it starts to run.
Right.
Okay. So the three main issues from the county's perspective that I've heard from both sides of the government, one is the new pilot for Booth Street, which you guys have been discussing. I know the one concern that I have heard from both parties is the, and I already told TJ about this, is the sentence in there about the pilot payments being reduced by any pilot payment that would be made to Citi later. So that's something I think TJ could speak to because I know that's a concern that's been raised by everybody. Do you want to do it one at a time?
I'm happy to speak to that. If it's a concern of everyone, I'm happy to address that. So here's how it works. This project has X amount of acres. I can't remember the acres. Do you know?
Roughly 10 total, Phase One and Two combined.
It's about 10 acres, Phase One, Phase Two. So right now, the property has 100 units. If you stay on the same 100, excuse me, the same 10 acres and you develop 168 units, you are no longer within the zoning... you are no longer within the zoning code for Wycomica County, because it doesn't allow that density. So, what would happen to happen in Phase Two is we would have to go before the planning commission and back before this council to get some help with the density requirements to keep the project in the county, or we would have to petition the city to annex the whole thing into the city. So, the language of the pilot is to, in anticipation, so that we don't have to come back before you two or three or four years from now, I don't know how long it takes, but whatever that timeframe is, to say, oh, by the way, sorry, but we need to pull out of this pilot, and we're running over to the city, because we get our density. So, the goal is to address it here, to put it on the table, to have everybody aware of it, so that if we have an issue with density and we have to go to the city, then we would have to do something else with the city in order to get the density to make the project work with 168 units. So, that's why the one sentence appears inside of the pilot.
I think the concern I always heard that the county's payment would essentially be zero if that reduction was to take place. So you may want to speak to why you think that's appropriate.
That the county's reduction from the pilot payment would go to zero? Well, the pilot, I think the calculation, in fact, you correct me wrong, on 30, 40 units in the county, fully occupied, under the pilot formula set forth here, is about $9,600?
Just about, based on what we're assuming the assessed value would be.
So, in the grand scheme of things, with all due respect, on building a, you know, 17 and a two-phase, is a $35 million project, and we're really talking in Phase One, $9,600 a year, and we have to go to the city in order to get Phase Two built, I don't think we're going to create any economic nightmare for the county. If we would have to go into the city, we would be talking about $9,600 a year.
If this is going to be an issue, and you know that the density is going to be an issue, why not deal with that ahead of time? And, you know, if it's going to have to be annexed into the city, then we don't need to be sitting here dealing with the issue of the pilot.
Well, because it's really, in our opinion, it's premature to go through all the machinations to be annexed and do all of those things. If we get through Phase One, which is still built in the county, because we can do it, but, for example, it could be three years down the road, and it just depends on what happens in Washington. Some of these tax credits, or all of them, may not be available. So unless there's some other ingenious funding mechanism, it may be many years before Phase Two would even take off. And so, I think going forward, trying to hash all that out prematurely before Phase Two is even on the drawing board would not get us where we need to be to at least get the ground broke and to use the available tax credits that these investors can use today.
I think some of the other issues revolve around failed pilot programs in the past, and trying to at least get back to square one on what the county, where the county should be before we commit to go forward any further.
I appreciate that comment. I would like to say that with respect to this pilot, while it does have the Wycomica Housing Authority's name on it, I've given you, I think, every indication that the role is de minimis at this point, and that any failed pilot arrangements in the past with the housing authority have nothing to do, quite frankly, with Penrose. And I will address the other pilot issues momentarily. But I think this project is unique with respect to who the pilot is with and who is responsible for making those payments, and it is not the housing authority. So, I understand that there have been some issues in the past, and if you would like, I can address those now, Mr. President, if you would like. Or, unless...
Mrs. Howarth, I'll let you continue.
I think that's what we had, those were all the concerns I heard about the new pilot for Booth Street. So, if we can move on to the other topics, that's all that had been expressed to me about that issue.
Okay.
Okay.
Why don't you just briefly, just for, just for education?
Okay, with the old pilot?
Yes.
Okay, so, so the county has had a pilot with the Wycomica Housing Authority since 1969. So, there was a pilot arrangement with respect to the scattered sites that the housing authority owns. And there were some issues in the 2000s, which I was not involved in, and Mr. Bibb was not. And this is a good opportunity for me to back up a little bit and tell you that I know that this council and the county executive, the former county executive, had some issues with the housing authority and the pilot programs. Just to be upfront, Mr. Bibb is new. I don't know if any of you have met him before. I know he met with the county executive some weeks ago. He has come on board as the new executive director of the Wycomica County Housing Authority with 25?
37 years.
Excuse me. You look much younger than that, with 37 years' experience in public projects and for many years with housing authorities. He is also the director of the...
Housing Commissioner of Talbot.
Housing Commissioner of Talbot County. So, he comes to the housing authority with a new look, a new attitude. And quite candidly, Don was here probably less than a week and called me, introduced himself, and said, I need to come see you, because I need you to tell me what's been going on here. I have a lot of stuff here that needs to be dealt with. And one of the things was the old pilot. So, let me tell you how this worked, at least in my opinion and my position with respect to it, is the pilot went on for many, 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 many years, since 1969, up into the early 2000s. And my understanding procedurally how it worked is, is that there would be a submission to the county each and every year for the pilot rent for the properties. They would break them down about where the properties were and which ones were rented. They would send in the calculations, they would send in one check, and the county would cut a check to the city of Salisbury and to the city of Fruitland, and the county would keep the remaining amount that was for the properties in the county proper, not in a municipality. Unfortunately, the housing authority received an advice from a consultant, I knew nothing about this, wasn't involved for many, many years, that they were not required to and that the county could do nothing to them if they did not make their pilot payments. And I would never give anyone that advice. Mr. Bibb actually is familiar with the consulting group that gave that advice. But, so, there was advice given, and so the county did not pay a pilot, excuse me, the housing authority did not pay a pilot for six or seven years, from '03 to 2010. Then, we came here before you, asking for a waiver of the prior pilot fees, and you declined. The city of Fruitland and the city of Salisbury waived those, and we went forward with what we thought were new and improved pilots, only to run into another bump in the road, where the county took the position that we had to pay a pilot fee for every property in the county proper, and then a separate fee to the city of Salisbury and to the city of Fruitland. I claim that's a misunderstanding, because as far as I'm concerned, that was never the deal. It was never understood that way. And it is illegal, both at the state and federal level, to make two pilot payments, because the pilot calculation says 10%, it's on the HUD form, and it's 10% of sheltered rent, period. So, that's where things got bogged down. I know that there were either some checks sent in or not sent in in the last couple of years, and quite frankly, I had very little or anything to do with the housing authority until the last four months. So, some time went by before my services were requested again, and here we are again. So, the goal is, candidly, to try to set the record straight, to get everybody on an even playing field, and to ask for forgiveness for past sins, and ask for cooperation and help with your council and the housing authority going forward. And so, in that regard, we have offered, if we can move forward and get the financing, because some of the funds that come from the project for Booth Street in earnest to the benefit of the housing authority at settlement, at which time we could pay you your past due pilot fees, if that is the wish of the council. So, we are A, prepared to do that. I will be very candid, it was news to me a few days ago when I met with Maureen about some issue about we had to pay some bay restoration fees. Quite frankly, we were completely unaware of that. And we have called the state and are trying to get a clarification of whether that applies to our project. And not surprisingly, no one quite knows the answer to that question yet. So we are waiting to see if we actually have to pay you that. So, we're working through that issue at the state level to see if we're exempt from the bay restoration fees. So, we are happy to pay you up, to get you current. And we have also included a resolution requesting that we modify the Exhibit A to the current pilot to make the pilot fee payable to the county for only those properties that are in the county proper. And then the pilot fees payable to the city of Fruitland and the city of Salisbury remain as is. So, is there bad blood? Again, I'm not going to beat around the bush. I wish things were cleaner and smoother. They aren't, or they weren't. And Mr. Bibb is here, hopefully, and he has come to me with some other legal and some technical issues, where he is trying to clean up the shop and go forward very professionally. And we want to do this, A, with the pilot with Booth Street, so we can renovate and rebuild that, and B, to go forward in cleaning up our pilot with the county. And C, Mr. Cannon, if I may just briefly, we are finally to the point of getting some funding to start cleaning up our 90 scattered sites. And that process has started. We have gotten some of those properties completed.
They've completed some on West Street. We just had access...
West Road.
West Road, I'm sorry.
Don't be careful, earnings up there, sir.
The housing authority had not had access to capital fund monies for the past two years due to issues with the administration. We got that resolved within the first 60 days that I was on board. So we have access to half a million dollars of capital fund monies, which we're proposing to use to start revitalizing the scattered site units. Proceeds from the settlement on the Booth Street property are going to add to that pot of money to continue restoring those properties to livable condition. We have received approval from HUD in March on those properties being eligible for a RAD also. So, we've had discussions with the Bank of Delmarva about borrowing money in order to complete the restoration of those 90 units and get them all back online. Nice curb appeal, maintained. I can't speak for my predecessors in the past, but I can tell you, I'm here to clean shop. I'm here to clean up what is a bad situation all the way around, and hopefully work together with all of you all to make this a better environment for everybody.
Will you be handling the single-family homes?
Yes.
Anybody, any other, any further questions or comments on?
Can I interject?
Mrs. Howarth, yes.
Yeah.
I wasn't leaving you out, trust me. You were next.
Can I make an objection?
He will object. Since TJ and I met, I've been working with the finance department to be able to confirm what the housing authority's stance is. So, some of this occurred today, so TJ and I have not spoken, so it's information for everybody at the same time. So, up until the delinquency started, which was around 2002 and 2003, payments were coming in, TJ is correct, it was one check. And then the county did calculations, which were prorated out to the state and the two municipalities. That calculation, we have found sheets showing how the calculation was done in finance, none of which I think was probably ever provided to the attorneys involved, TJ, Paul Wilbur, and Andy Mitchell. It's not something I think they ever saw how the calculations were actually done. So, looking at this sheets, we did confirm with finance that the county was keeping a pilot payment based on all properties in this county, not just the ones in the unincorporated areas. So those sheets are something I can share with TJ, so he can see about what was historically done. So I think when the county's stance kept being, the county's pilot payment was for all the properties, it was because someone knew that this was being done, but no one ever shared the background of the calculations that had been done. So, one check, 10% of the shelter rent was received by the county. A proration was done by the assessed value and the tax rates, and checks were sent out. So, the municipalities never got a full 10% on what was in their jurisdiction, because the county always kept a portion, and so did the state. So those I can share with TJ. So that's historical information that we've determined in the last week, in the last week. So, the number that TJ has been giving is around $14,000 of what he think the current delinquency is. I checked with TJ, he said he did that calculation based on the properties that are only in the unincorporated areas. For finance to do the calculation to determine what it would be on all the properties in the county, they said it would be about four days' worth of work for a person to trudge through some records to determine what the number would be based on the way it had always been calculated here at the county. TJ will certainly make the argument that, perhaps he'll still make the argument that it shouldn't be done that way. I've looked at the calculation. The calculation doesn't impinge on that more than 10% shelter rent. So the 10% shelter rent was paid, it was divided out by everybody, so no one... It's not the scenario where TJ's thinking, where the county now would get 10%, and everybody else get 10%, and the housing authority would ultimately pay more than a total of 10% shelter rent. I agree with TJ, that's not the correct scenario. But what I'm seeing, which was done in the past, that that was not the case. There's no more than 10% was received in total, and then it was divided out. So it's something for the executive, council, the parties involved, to decide what number they want to base that delinquency on, and then accept payment or not accept payment on that number. He's correct about the bay fees, that that is accurate. Finance has thought that the state won't waive it, but I told TJ, call, because you guys may be able to get that taken care of. That number's around 6,000. Obviously, they still haven't gotten an answer about that yet. So those are sort of the outstanding issues from the county's perspective, finances. Without more time, they weren't able to come up with what we think the number would be based on the old calculation process. But I talked to both Paul Wilbur today and Andy Mitchell, and none of them recalled ever seeing, I hadn't seen the sheets till later today. No one ever said that they were shown calculations of how it was done in the past, which I think may have stopped some disagreements back when this came up in 2009, 10, if that information had been on the table for everybody.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead. How many units, what's the breakdown? How many are in the county proper versus?
The minority of the units, the majority are in the two municipalities, minorities in the city.
In the county?
I mean, sorry, in the county. So, and I don't have that, I mean, I do have the breakdown, I have all the lists of all the properties and where they are. But I want to respond to Maureen, because some of this I'm hearing for the first time. So I want to be real clear on the record, okay? If it's not 14,000, it's 18,000, I don't have a problem. It's $250,000, we're going to have another discussion. But no one's received that much in pilot payments, probably, in the life of the pilot. So, I'm here to say that I don't know what magic occurs in finance, you know. I have a law degree and not good with numbers, unless people owe me money, and then I remember. But, I don't care if we can work it out about how that 10% is broken down and split up. That's not a problem to me, because here's what we're talking about. And just bear with me one moment. For example, over the years, and I think this was included in your packet, those numbers are fairly accurate. Between the county, the city of Salisbury, the city of Fruitland, '04 to 2009, the total amount of pilot fees payable to all of them collectively was about $64,000. So, if it's 3,800 versus 4,600, and we're only talking about the 10%, we don't have a problem with that. We just all need to be familiar with the formula. Quite frankly, everything Maureen just said to me, and I've been dealing with this issue for years, is news to me. I was not aware that they actually split it four or five ways. The cities got theirs, the county got a piece, state got a piece, I mean, so everybody's got their hand in it. But you can have a lot of hands in a $64,000 pot over, you know, a six-year period. So, we have no problem in working through that. I don't think it is going to amount to a whole lot. And whatever we can come up with, and I think Mr. Bibb would be in agreement, whatever we come up with, we'll take care of, and we will get an answer to and deal with the state. care of, and we will get an answer to and deal with the state issue about whether we get exemption on the bay restoration fees.
Sure. I mean, ten percent is ten percent, no matter how you slice it, so...
And we pay ten percent. How it gets chopped up is...
Right. That's our, that's the county and the cities.
That's what I'm opposition. We don't need any more calculations.
Any more, yes.
I was wondering, I mean, the executive's office has sat through this. It seems like they may have some interest in it, and we could be here from them at this, I mean, hear their opinion. Is that opening too much of a can of worms?
It's like wings getting paid bill.
Do you want to say anything towards this, or is this something, we'll have other time to discuss this as well?
We have to work it out because we won't see the housing get started. As far as, I mean, this is a lot of stuff that TJ has just learned, Maureen's just teaching. And quite frankly, we would like to go ahead and go back to the drawing board with TJ and Penrose and Mr. Bibb, and we'll go ahead and sit down again and go from that point because a lot of this is new and it's not fair to us to, you know, be asked a question right on the spot here, so...
Sure. I agree. I understand. Any other council comments or questions? Mrs. Howarth?
No, those were all the issues on...
What about timeline?
Can I make a response to that? We, and I think we have some time, and we will work diligently with you to work out the number for the pilot payment, for pay us due arrears, and for whatever the county says they're owed, the state with the flush tax or whatever you want to call it, and we'll leave that alone. But with respect to the Penrose going forward, that is very time-sensitive because that round of funding is coming up for funding, and they are sort of against the wall to get a pilot and a resolution from the city so they can go forward to close.
How time-sensitive? I mean...
Fifteen days.
It may not happen.
Your closing is in August, is that the date for...
The closing is more like September, mid-September at this point.
All right, gentlemen, we appreciate you taking the time and...
Thank you for your time.
...in-depth discussion. Congratulations, and looking forward to a lot of good work out of you.
Mr. Short, when you call the agency, you'll be able to get in touch with me. I'm available 24/7. I'll be glad to give each of you my personal cell phone.
Great.
I'd like that, please.
Where's your office at?
I have an office in Booth Street. I have an office in Easton and an office in St. Louis.
And then it has another office in my office.
All right. Are you contracted out in this position, or are you actually...
We are contracted, yes.
It was a contract service. Okay. All right. Okay. All right, gentlemen, thank you very much.
Thank you all, Jim.
Appreciate the time.
I'd like to entertain a motion, if we could, to adjourn the open work session so that we could go into a closed work session. Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion, carry the open work session as concluded.